Good evening, everyone. I will call our work session of July 27th to order. We have a couple items on our agenda. So we're going to review and discuss intoxicating liquor license fees for 2022. And then we will have an update on key financial strategies, review preliminary proposed 2022 budget, proposed 2022 capital improvement budget, and the 2023 through 2026 capital improvement plan. We'll review the five-year street reconstruction plan, proposed utility rates, and review of city fees. So there are a lot of items, and I will just pass it over to City Manager Rodriguez to get us started.
Thank you, Mayor. As you've stated, we have a full agenda tonight, so I'm going to preview it very briefly. Basically, tonight, we are going to look at our financial condition and plan at a very high level through the KFS. And Director Regis is going to present that, and he'll go first. Also, that will be followed by Public Works, and they will provide a brief presentation that should be about 30 minutes, and then followed by the fees, the proposed fees for the next year, and more of a substantive discussion about liquor license fees. So tonight's purpose is, it is informational. It's kind of a first peek at the 2021 revised and the 2022 proposed budgets. And we're seeking guidance on, you know, kind of how you're reacting to that first peek. Any concerns that you have or any priorities that you want to highlight, which will help me and staff in making a recommended budget that we'll discuss on August 24th. So with that, I'll turn it over to Director Regis.
Okay. If you look at our key financial strategies, there's actually two worksheets. There's the financing management plan and the capital financing plan. I'm going to start on the capital financing plan, which really, like the slide says, it's all of our existing and projected tax levy requirements. Anything above the green bar there, that is our existing tax levies that we have for outstanding debt, our EDA, our rolling stock and IT levy. Anything below that is our projected debt service tax levies based on bonds that we will issue for road projects or whatever it could be. Now, the first thing that I want to touch on is that for 2022, there are no new debt service tax levies. However, if you do look at year 2022, you can see on line 12 there, which I've highlighted, that it looks like there is a brand-new tax levy. Well, actually, those 2020B bonds are refunding bonds, and they are refunding the 2012A bonds. And you can see that falls off for 2022. And also, the discrepancy in the amounts there between 2021 and 2022 and those two bond issues is that in 2021, I wrote down or did not levy the full amount for those 2012A bonds. So we could keep the levy at a reasonable level and things like that. So I just wanted to touch on that real quick. Now, I'm going to move over to the financial managing plan there. And I want to go down to line 33. And right now, for the 2022 budget, our levy is looking at 4.9%. That's based on just everything we've done. We've made cuts, we found extra revenues and things like that. We've got it down to that. And from there, I want to go down to line 59. Now, this is the estimated average home market value that we've received from Hanupan County. And it's a 7.4% increase over the prior year. And that's a significant increase. That's a lot, big market value increase. And you combine that with a 4.9% market value or a tax levy increase, it does affect what the taxpayers are going to pay. From there, I want to move up to line 51 and 52. This is our tax rate based on tax capacity. And this is the rate that's charged to the homeowner's tax capacity value once it's converted into that tax capacity value. We're showing right now, we're going to have slightly under 1% increase from 2021 to 2022. But then, the big impact then is, well, how does that affect residents' taxes? Based on a $266,000 home, they're going to be looking at about $121 increase in 2022 or 9.08% increase. That equates out to about, oh, about $10 per month is what it happens there. So that's kind of where things are looking at right now for 2022. Now, I'm going to go back to the capital financing plan. I want to emphasize what's going to happen here.
Chris, sorry to interrupt. Just want to let you know, the numbers on your sheet are different than ours. So if you could use the titles. I think you have some gap lines to separate the sections, and we don't.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
On the last page. So when some of the numbers you were referencing on our sheet were blank. So I think I followed based on the titles of what you were looking at. So... Like, you referenced... Okay. At one point, you referenced line 12 early on. Oh, okay. Sorry, my mistake.
Line 12 is right there.
Before you go on, can I ask a question?
Yep, go ahead.
So are you saying most of that increase is because the property values have gone up? Or is...
It's a combination. It's a combination of tax levy increase, market value increase, the property values, and whatever our tax capacity is going to be. How it affects the tax capacity rate. So it's a combination of everything. Everything's kind of interrelated.
So both things are affecting it? Our budget levy increases and the home values?
Market value, oh yeah, market values definitely increase it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, I'm back on now. On the capital financing plan. So, what's your change? Okay, good. I'm going to look at line 17 there. New bond issue in 2022, and the tax levy will impact the budget in 2023. And that's for the 65th Street reconstruction. Right now, we're looking at approximately a little over $6 million of street reconstruction bonds that we'll issue and estimating about $427,000 of a new tax levy in 2023. So you can see from 2022 to 2023, we're going for a little over $5 million up to $5.5 million in debt service special levy increase. We go to the first page. Now, we want to go back up. I'm going to go back up to line 42. So tax levy increase based on everything else that we've estimated for 2023 and the new special debt service tax levies. You can see that amount follows through right here. Here's the 5.5 million. We're looking at a 6.9% increase, estimated increase. And then also, the tax levy, tax capacity rate goes up. Tax rate goes up. And we're only estimating a 3% market value increase. But we're looking at approximately 100 and over $100 increase in property taxes on the city residents based on the $273,000 market value. That's almost an 8% increase. Now, there are certain things that we can do. And I'm going to go up, up here to line 9, or line 18, excuse me. And you can see in 2021 and 2022 and 2021 adopted, we have significant amount of other financing sources there. And those are transfers into the general fund. So for instance, in 2022, we have our normal liquor fund transfer that comes in. It's about $335,000, $40,000. But we're also transferring in approximately $460,000 of our reserves that we've accumulated over the years to help buy down that levy in 2022. But if you look at 2023, all we've got in there right now is the liquor transfers. They're going into the general fund. So there is potential to take some of those reserves and use that to buy down that levy in 2023. Yes?
Are any of the funds from the federal government that you referenced in the council memo you got today on here? Or is that totally not included?
I have approximately $163,000 in 2021 and an estimated $100,000 in 2022. However, the guidance on how we can use that money is kind of clear as mud. There's one, one instance where we can use the money to recover lost revenue from the pandemic and things like that. But the way they have us calculate it does not, it's not advantageous to cities or anything like that. They say you're supposed to do it entity-wide. And I don't think that's really fair because if you look at the swimming pool, for example, that's its own separate operating fund. And they were completely closed in 2020. So lost revenue in 2020 for them was approximately $400,000. But if you add all the funds together and do it entity-wide, I came up with $163,000 for 2021 that I could use as, you know, just revenue recovery, which I don't think is, I don't think is right. But, and I do know that about four or five of the local auditing firms that do local governments, they are getting together to basically try to figure out a lot of this stuff. So it makes, because they're going to have to audit all the cities that spend this money because it's part of the single audit process and stuff, especially if it's over a million or $2 million a year that cities use this money. So they're going to try to get together and get, be all on the same page. And then they're going to pass that information on to their clients and things like that. So to answer your question, I've got a little bit in there, but I didn't count on a lot of it. But there is potential for more to be in there. We just have to get clarification on a lot of the guidance. U.S. Treasury is not very clear. Okay, so basically, that's what we're doing. You know, we have the potential to buy down that levy in 2023 if we decide to do that or not. One other thing I want to talk about before I go on to the PowerPoint and talk about the budget is here on line four, local government aid. As you can see, I've estimated approximately $2 million pretty much all the way through until we get to 2026. And I've dropped it down $400,000 to 1.6. And the reason for that is at the end of 2025, there will be about two or three tax increment districts that are going to fall off. It means the tax capacity then for those districts is going to be spread all over the entire city. It's not going to be restricted anymore. The downside to that is, is that it's... Cities' tax capacity is part of the local government aid form at the legislature. We know there's going to be an impact. We just don't know what it's going to be. There's no way to estimate it at this early date. So to try to be safe, and I just reduced it by $400,000. And that's kind of, that's had an effect to probably increase the levy a little bit from 4.22 to 4.89. Again, these are all estimates and stuff. And I'm basing pretty much everything on basically a 3% increase for both revenues and expenditures going forward in 2023, really forward and things like that. So that's pretty much what I had prepared for this. It's a pretty busy spreadsheet. I think the big issue or the big item that everybody wants to look at is, okay, what are the tax levy increases? You can see in 2024, we're looking at 2.8, which is really good. And we're looking at a little over four, close to five on some of the four future years and things like that. Any questions or anything?
Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to confirm, looking farther down the sheet, it looks like obviously, everything is interrelated. But even with that likely reduction of some amount in the LGA, that the net result of the TIF districts rolling off is still like relief on the tax burden on single-family homes? Like, we've got a negative...
Yeah, because if you look at line 48 right here, you can see it goes from 42.9 in 2025 to 46.8.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah, that's a big, big benefit. But losing $400,000 potentially at the LGA, there's not a lot of ways you can make up that revenue. Cities are really restricted in how they can generate revenues. Typically, they can't just raise revenues for the sake of raising revenue. They have to have justification for doing that. Typically, that means increased costs and stuff like that. So usually, to fill that gap, that $400,000 gap is typically going to be seen in property tax levies.
And then, sorry, one more question. Two, I appreciate the, kind of the heads up about what's coming up next year with the 65th Street project. I know in the past, we have bought down some new debt. Do you have, I guess, what's the forecast on kind of where the potential money we'd use toward that is? And like, how much can we, could we consider? I'm sure there'll be a few different options. But how much could we consider buying down that debt before we start to have less of a rainy day fund than we want?
Well, we could, that's a possibility. We can do that if council decides they want to do that. The issue is, is that the reserves now are basically finite. There's no new revenue going into it other than interest earnings, which, as you all know, there really are no interest earnings. So that is a possibility to do that. I guess at this point in time, I wouldn't recommend it, but that's not my call to make.
Go ahead, City Manager Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. So one of the puzzle pieces that is missing, and Director Regis and I have tried really hard to figure it out, is that impact on LGA and also fiscal disparities when those major TIFs roll off the TIF, but then roll onto our tax base. And we have been in contact with House Research, and they're really good at estimating it. But they, because it's a statewide program and that impacts Richfield, they're really not going to be able to tell us till 2024. So I think the goal is, until we get there and have better information on that, is just to stay as flexible as possible, which probably means a transfer to help mitigate the debt service as opposed to buying down the debt issue.
Other questions or comments from council members?
I had one question around assuming a 3% increase. So that's 3% increase for just our staff expenses for operating, correct?
It's basically for both revenues and, and operating expenses and stuff like that.
Okay.
Only place I haven't used 3% is on, well, basically, 2022 is actual. But up here in fiscal disparities, I just, I estimated 1% because it's so hard to add, it's so hard. I mean, it kind of goes like this, stays fairly flat for the most part, but it's pretty difficult to estimate that. And LGA, I just use the flat $2 million and stuff like that. But most everything else, I try to do 3%.
And, oh, thank you. And, oh, go ahead, sorry.
No, I was going to say too, fines and forfeits, I pretty much leveled that off at $220,000. I mean, I take some liberties.
Thank you for that. So I'm not quite sure if 3% would, you know, I don't know if 3% increase makes sense for revenues or not. It seems like how, you know, since you were talking about us being very limited in how we can raise fees and the, and the types of revenues we can create, that makes, that would probably make sense. I'm wondering about operating expenses. I know our city just operates on an extremely lean budget. And what does 3% mean in reality? Is that like closer to 0% in reality? And so, you know, I know that that percentage and increasing it is not necessarily the direction we want to be going. But also, I'm thinking about what is realistic? And is that 3% in terms of operating expenses realistic or not?
Well, just to backtrack a little bit, to answer your first question, the pay plans did, are budgeted to increase 3% for 2022.
Okay.
But that doesn't take into account, within the pay plans, there are step increases for employees. And there are a lot of employees going through the steps. Those are typically about a 5% increase when the employee hits that step, the next step. So theoretically, it could be a 5% to 8% increase for that employee in that year. I mean, those, those steps are built into our budget and stuff like that. But the pay plans are increasing 3%. And that means the steps will increase likewise and stuff. The 2022 budget as it stands right now is at about a 4.24% increase, both revenues and expenditures over 2021 adopted. So that is more than 3%.
Okay.
And that's just based on everything that departments have submitted and things like that and things we've tried to whittle down and things like that. I mean, and usually, you know, revenues too, a lot of them are generated, like licenses and permits are just, especially permits, are generated by activity, development activity and things like that. I mean, so those could fluctuate a lot, going up and down. Charges for services, I mean, a lot of that is recreation fees. A lot of that is deputy registrar passport fees and things like that. And those are affected by the pandemic. Intergovernmental revenues, there's different kinds of local aids that the city receives and stuff. Those, sometimes those fluctuate from year to year. Sometimes they increase, sometimes they decrease. And then miscellaneous revenues, that's just a kind of a crapshoot.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Go ahead, Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Director Regis. I have a question, maybe dovetailing a little bit with Councilmember Wayland's questions and comments about our cash reserves. And you're pointing out that, that there's, there's only financial harm at this point for having excess cash in terms... I mean, there's a, there's a benefit in terms of mitigating risk, but in terms of a financial return, there's no return...
There's no harm in having the reserves. I prefer to have the reserves.
But what I mean, but what I, what I mean is from a, a return on the, on the investment, we're, we're looking at, at, there's, there's not a place where that money could sit, where it could, it could earn any, any functional interest. And I guess my, this is my, my point is, if we're looking, it seems like we're trying to get to 2026 in terms of we have some, some sure revenue there. And so I just, I want to express my comfort level and support to looking at a three-year period where we, we are relatively confident. And I welcome any comments from City Manager Rodriguez or yourself if there's some question that we, if there's some question that we would not, in fact, receive those revenues in, in the, the coming, you know, four, four years. But that, that seems like we're trying to, we're trying to find a way to bridge that gap. I'm, I'm not thrilled with the idea of, of having the, the taxpayers lift, do all the, do all the heavy lifting, especially if we have some flexibility. So I'm more comfortable with an intermediate risk in terms of the cash reserve if it means we can keep our, the, the tax burden down and we have some certainty that there's increased revenue coming in 2026.
City Manager Rodriguez.
So I think there's two dates that we, two years that we have to look at. It's not only 2026. And that one, I would really, really like to have more certainty about. And we've tried. We asked Ellers, our financial advisory firm, as well. It's just a really complicated formula, and we're just not going to know until 2024. So we don't have to wait till 2026. We should have some more certainty in 2024. But then in 2029, then the existing debt starts to, to roll off. That's another important date. And I, I do, I agree with you about having a plan with our reserves to help. Unfortunately, I just don't have that information for the, when those larger TIFs are added back into our tax base. So I think you want to plan for some flexibility. I don't, I, I would worry about drawing down reserves too much. So I think it needs to be a balance of having a higher increase in the levy.
Absolutely.
Down reserves. And the reason is because we don't know, that whole LGA could go away. We don't know the impact. Like, the last time we had a more modest TIF roll off, the impact was about 400,000. These are much bigger TIFs. So I would be, I would be nervous about only drawing down reserves.
I think, I think that point's really well taken. And even in, but if we were to just explore the worst-case scenario, here, we've, we've budgeted for 400,000. It's right to understand that if we, we lost all of it, it'd be 1.6 more than what we've budgeted for, that that's the, that's the gap. So we would still, we'd still come out in, in 2026 on our worst day, which would be, which, when we lost LGA the first time around, was the darkest of dark days. Because of Director Regis's leadership and tough decisions that we made, I think we're much better positioned to weather. And again, in this situation, it's not that we're losing, we will lose LGA, but we would actually get, you know, several million dollars more, or at least probably $2 million more per year in revenue when we, when the TIF rolled off, right? We'd lose government aid, but we would have more. Am I misunderstanding that?
I just want to clarify something. When the TIF rolls off, it's not revenue.
Okay.
It's tax capacity value. It's not revenue, any revenue at all. So I just want to clarify that.
Thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah, so what that happens is like Councilmember Wayland mentioned is, you know, our, our tax capacity rate will drop because there's that much more tax capacity to spread across the entire city. And that's very helpful to all the residents and our task capacity rate and stuff. So it's really not, I just want to clarify that, you know, to make sure. But it's a good thing to have tax capacity, increase in tax capacity. The only downside to that is like we've talked about is, as to the LGA form, how it affects us.
So, oh, sorry, go ahead.
So could you, could you clarify then, what could we expect in a... What, what can, because we can't, there's the one, it seems like on the one side, we can be, we can, we, we don't have clarity on what the LGA will be. Do we have more clarity that the tax capacity will increase? But without, without adjusting the, the tax rate, do we have some clarity on the revenue we could expect because the TIF is rolling off?
Well, again, it's, we're not getting any revenue. It's tax capacity value. It's not revenue. So you could probably, the only way you can think of it as revenue is we could probably levy more taxes. In a way, it wouldn't have an effect from the previous year to the current year. You can levy more taxes. I think that's probably what you're getting.
That's, that's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to say. So there will, there will be, is it fair to say, there will be an increase in revenue? When the tax...
Through a tax levy.
Through, yes.
And it would be, and hopefully, we could do that and not affect resident, wouldn't increase residents' values if everything stayed the same.
Yes.
Now, somebody had a large market value increase, then they might see a tax increase too. If everything stays the same from one year to the next, they probably wouldn't see anything. Did I answer that the way?
I, I think I answered part of, I answered part of my question anyways.
City Manager Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So because the, if the rate were to stay the same and because our tax base would grow quite a bit that year, our estimate, and again, this is a ballpark estimate, would be another 1.2 million.
Okay, thank, thank you. That's, that's what I was, I was looking for. Thank you.
Councilmember Supple.
So is it fair to say that long-term, we're better off with our tax capacity increasing rather than depending on LGA? Because we don't control the LGA, but at least the tax capacity, that tax rate's there. Are we in a better position doing this transition of how we're getting the money?
It is absolutely a more stable revenue to have the property taxes. So that, this has been a long-time policy for the city to help build that tax base so that we could rely more on property taxes and less on LGA. So absolutely. The problem, or not the problem, the, the reason it makes it hard to look at this long-term is because we, we are not sure what the LGA impact will be. So do we count, do we count on half of it being reduced? Is it a quarter? That, that's the, that's the question mark. But absolutely, yes, it is a more stable revenue source.
Other comments or questions? Councilmember Wayland?
I think where we're going next is the budget presentation. I just want to say that I, the numbers and percentages are really helpful. But I think ultimately, the numbers, the, the story behind the numbers is more important. So I'm excited to hear, like, what is, what becomes possible? Or what are we, how much are we making new things possible? How much are we just maintaining what we're doing? Kind of that narrative behind what these numbers mean. So I'm excited for that portion of the conversation.
Oh, great. There we go. Okay, budget update, timetable, and key events. First bullet point, we're, we've talked about KFS. We're going to talk about the budget, CIB, CIP. Mike's going to talk about utility rates. Joe's going to talk about five-year reconstr, street reconstruction plan. Talk about city fees and also liquor license fees. We've got a budget study session scheduled August 24th, our main, main budget session. Adopt a proposed budget tax levy on September 14th. Truth and taxation meeting, that's to be determined. And then certify final levy on December 14th. So some of the key items that are happening this year, the public safety SRR program for schools was not renewed. That was an $83,000 hit to the budget. Here's the ARP money that I've talked about and Councilmember Supple mentioned. I calculated 163,000 entity-wide, which means all city funds combined in one, one instance to do that. When I did it, just considering that just the general fund is alone, I came up with $751,000, which I thought was a great number at the time. But the guidance says entity-wide, which I don't agree with, but that's my opinion. As I talked about, no new debt service levies in 2022. We talked about cost of living increases and average step increases. Within the general fund, personnel costs are approximately 70, 75% of the general fund. Then also, we did a little reorganization with the city clerk division and the deputy registrar division. Created a new division and broke out the city clerk and put it in that. Some other ide, other items. Some other ide-, other items, 65th Street was delayed to 2022, 2022. And as we talked about, the tax levy will impact us in 2023. Some other roadway projects were delayed one to two years. I think that's, that's old news, actually. We did some of that last year, too. Our rolling stock and equipment levies at $835,000, that's only a $5,000 increase. We did increase the EDA levy by 3%. As you recall, all last year, we did decrease the EDA levy. It went down to help out the tax levy last year and stuff like that. 2022 LGA reflects a slight increase. It's like 10,000 bucks, not a whole lot of money. And our proposed levy, as we stated earlier, is at 4.9%. So right now, as, as of today, our 2022 gross levies at 25.1 million, that's a 4.9% increase over 2021. The components of that levy are the general fund levy for all operations in the general funds, a little over $20 million. Then their equipment levy, which we talked about, is 835,000. The EDA levy, which is 556,000. And then the debt service tax levy is at $3.6 million, and that gives us our 25 million, 25 million dollar gross levy. Got our gross tax levy history. I did, I ran an average of the 10 years here, and it's about 4%. You can see, last five years, it's probably closer to 5%. So our proposed general fund levy is at 27.8 million. It's a 4.24% increase. I think I mentioned that earlier too in response to a question. And that's a, about 0.59% from the 2021 revised budget. Want to look at general fund revenues by category? If you look at the top three, those all reflect increases from 2021 adopted. If you look at charges for services, fines and forfeitures miscellaneous and transfers, those are all reflect decreases. The primary decrease in charges for services reflects passport fees. We still haven't recovered from 2020 yet on that. And then fines and forfeitures, that's basically, you know, tickets and things like that. And miscellaneous, like I said before, it's really hard to budget for that. That's, that's been decreasing the last couple of years, so I'm trying to decrease that. And then transfers, what we only have in there is our reserve transfer of 460,000 and the liquor transfer money coming in for 2022. Looking at general fund expenditures by department, as you can see from 2021 to 2022, there's an increase. And every department averages about 4% by, by department. And that last line there, the transfers, that's a $20,000 increase. And those are transfers going into our pool and ice arena fund to help with their operations and help buy down or get rid, reduce their deficit fund balance that they've been living with for several years. And that's on recommendation from our auditors. And we also have, we also basically sign the recommendation. I've established a plan, worked with the city manager on that to further reduce those deficit fund balances and get them down to hopefully a zero balance. Here's the history of our reserves. At the end of 2020, we had $6.6 million in there. We put in 1.2 million last year from excess general fund surplus to do that. And we still had a $764,000 surplus in the general fund after that 1.2 million, a transfer out of the general fund. So that was, that was really helpful to this fund. Then I just got a little note there that our fund balance policy for the general fund, unassigned fund balance shall be an amount not less than 40% of the current year-end actual general fund revenues. And that is a change, brand-new change. All previous years, it's been general fund revenues, and we switched it to expenditures based on recommendation from our auditors. Now I'm going to go into the capital improvement budget and capital improvement plan.
Go ahead, council member.
Just to clarify on that last slide, because the, I'm still budgeting is not my strong suit. The, the asterisk you had there, that that is speaking to a separate fund than the numbers were for, correct?
Yeah, that's a fund balance policy for the general fund.
Okay, the fund balance is not the same as, yeah, great.
Fund balance and cash are two different things, so, thank you. Capital process, projects are identified by city commissions and city departments. Plenary report is generated by the city manager and presented to planning commission. And the planning commission reviews the projects based on one consideration, and that is the projects conform to the comprehensive plan. If they conform to the comprehensive plan, then the planning commission will recommend those projects and approve them, and then return it to the city manager. Then the city manager will then formalize the CIB, CIP, and include it in the annual budget. So right now, for 2022, the capital improvement budget's at $26.5 million. The capital improvement plan is at $133 million. So some of the significant projects in 2022 is the continuation of the 77th Street underpass project. The infamous 65th Street reconstruction project that we've been talking about for a while. The five-year pavement management program with the estimated cost over the total five years of 3.4 million. And then the continuation of the citywide water meter upgrade. I think we're in year three of that. And the total cost of that is 4.1 million. That's the estimate. Uh, moving on to 2024, Woodlake Nature Center building, estimated $20 million. 69th Street reconstruction, 5.9 million. Outdoor pool improvements, $3 million. And then 70th, 70th Street reconstruction of $3 million. In the 2026, 76th Street West reconstruction, estimated cost of 6.1 million. And then beyond 2026, some very large projects. Humboldt Avenue, Lake Shore Drive at 8.5, and Nicollet Avenue and Penn Avenue reconstruction at 20.9 million. And that, that's really a, just a brief summary of what the capital improvement budget and plan is. And it has gone before the planning commission, and they did approve it and re, returned it to the city manager. And that is.
Councilmember Supple.
Just out of curiosity, for Nicollet and Penn, are we going to be responsible for all of that? Or is there a chunk that the county's going to be doing? Or is that going to start eating up all of our debt that came off? Will it go right back on?
No, we're not responsible for all that. Those are county roads. So I think we're responsible, what, 20%, Joe?
I don't know that there's a specific percentage that would be identified at this time. But it would be, it would be a cost share, and the details will be worked out per the Henning County cost share policy that's in place with municipalities of Henning County. So those, those $20 million estimates are a full project cost estimate if we were to do the project next year. So theoretically, those costs increase and more of those projects get pushed off. But the schedule for those is really driven by the county and their willingness to bring those projects forward.
Okay, any other questions before we transition? Councilmember Hayfer-Lee.
So just to clarify, the 77th Street underpass thing, is the total project cost roughly not the city's contribution?
Cost that submitted in the CIB.
Okay, thanks.
For 2022, I think it's probably only $10 million that we budgeted in cost for 2022 for that project. It's all right, we've been cost previous years, and it'll be cost subsequent years.
Councilmember Supple.
So to be clear, when you were saying, when city manager Rodriguez, when you said towards the end of the spreadsheet, our debt levy would be going down because things were coming off, did that have all these projects budgeted in there at some point? Or is it just what our current one is and hasn't added on, like 69th through 70th?
Those projects are, most of those projects are all right here.
Good. Other questions before we move on? Councilmember Wayland?
I guess circling back to the, kind of the story behind the numbers. Is it accurate to say, I know city manager Rodriguez and I have talked about this in our check-ins, but if you could speak to, it, it feels to me like we're in a place where our, our increase, the proposed increase this year is not for a set of specific, like, new initiatives or things, that it is more of a, like, keeping up with paying our staff what they deserve and maintaining the programs we have. I know we've talked a little bit about that there is, is more of an investment in the equity work that was, the position that was created last year. But could you speak a bit more to kind of the story of what is made possible by this increase?
So it is a, it was a challenging budget this year. Director Regis mentioned it, but again, in the general fund, our revenues are down significantly. I calculated about 915,000 in different categories. It is being, that is being blunted a bit because our building permit revenues are just, are, are so robust right now. But that's a long-term concern because we're in an expansion cycle right now, but that, that is going to contract eventually. Because we're predicting in 2021, they're about 360,000 up. And I'm talking about 2021 now, the revised. But for 2022, because we are not sure when some of those revenues are going to come back, like passport revenues is a big one, and I'm not sure when that's going to come back. Our, the, the traffic fines, I don't know when that's going to come back, or if it will come back to the levels pre-pandemic. So we are funding basically a lot of the additional programs that we funded in 2021. And those, we're not adding a lot in 2022. In part because, again, concern about these revenues, concern about long-term, the impact on the, on the levy. And, and so, yep, that's where we're at. And just a, a note on the property tax levy increase last year. It looks, if you just see the percentages, it doesn't quite tell the whole story. It was 5.5%, but because we expanded our tax base in that year, our rate, our tax rate did not go up very much. And so most taxpayers actually paid last, last year. This year, however, because we've got a hot housing market, residential market values went up by a lot, like 7.4%.
7.4%.
Whereas commercial went down a little bit, and apartments went up just a touch, like under, under a percent. So when you increase your levy, it's going to fall more on residential properties this year, which was not the case last year. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Any other questions before we transition? Okay, I think we can transition to the next section. Thank you, Director Regis. And that is with Public Works, correct?
So, oh, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, councilmember Trump.
I just have, I just have one quick question about Penn Avenue. And is that projected for 2029, that it's, is that aspirational? Or do we actually have a commitment from the county? Because that would be the first I've heard that the county is committed to that.
Yeah, councilmember Trump, you're, you're exactly right. There's no commitment from the county at this point. So it's, it's purely in there as a goal that the city would support that reconstruction when the county is, is open to doing it. We, I mean, staff's position is the sooner the better. It's a roadway in, in poor shape and in need of a lot of love.
I, I just wanted to clarify, a word one council member can hope.
Unfortunately, no hard data of any sort whatsoever at this time.
Thank you, sorry.
So city engineer Powers and superintendent Peterson, you want to come present, and I'll get you some microphones?
Hey, so again, I'm Mike Peterson, the assistant utility superintendent. So I'll go briefly over our utility rates and proposed increases for next year. So starting with the water fund, we're looking at a proposed increase of around 5%. This is in line with our, our 2017 utility rate study that was performed. This was anticipation, or in anticipation of projected projects, including the current water meter, water meter upgrade, which like Chris said, is in year three. We were anticipating that to be completed this year, however, due to COVID, it is pushed into next year. So it'll be completed hopefully by the end of next year. Again, you can see the, the rate increases here on the, on the table. Looking at the cash flow projection, so this again just kind of incorporates our O and N expenses, our operation maintenance expenses, capital expenses, and then the proposed increases. So we're projecting 5% over the next handful of years. We show that slight dip in '22 due to the water meter project, and then the fund does start to recover. We are planning in 2025, you see another dip there. That's due to the interconnect with the city Dyna. We are looking at some other funding strategies for that, so this outlook could change. And when we come back in September, we might talk more about that. But this is the current outlook for the water fund. So this, I think you've seen this before in the past, so this kind of compares us to, to other cities in the metro. So again, with the water, we're in around that upper third. I did look back over the past three years of this utility rate survey, and we really haven't changed position. So that's, that's relatively good. We're not outpacing others in the metro. And it's important to understand, too, that we do line soften, so that does add additional operation and maintenance expenses. So again, looking at the, the portion in the middle there, where the three cities that do soften in the metro are right in the middle. So we're, we're in good position with the water fund in terms of our neighbors in the metro. For wastewater, we're proposing a 2% increase. This is actually a reduction of what we had planned in the 2017 rate study. Mostly that's due to metcouncil charges being produced. We've seen a lot of, our flows have been reduced. That's due to a reduction in water uses. So we, like last year, excuse me, or proposed for '22, we're seeing a 2.75% decrease in metcouncil funds, or charges. That helps our fund because that allows us to have more money to do stuff internally, like our, our sanitary lining project, which is currently underway. So the 2% increase again is financing that lining project that we're going to continue to attack those, those risk, high-risk areas, high critical areas to improve our wastewater system. Outlook for the wastewater fund, the fund looks pretty healthy. So again, this is projecting out 2% increases. And as, as we, as we build that fund, or as we maintain that fund, we can continue to, to put more money into that sanitary lining to help improve our infrastructure and rebuild that system that was built back in the 1950s. So again, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, councilmember.
I was just going to ask, I know this is a little out of the scope of the budget, but on the, on those lining projects, are we, I know it's something that happens. The lifespan of a sewer main is pretty long. Are we, are we at a place, I guess, how, if you could guess a percentage of how close we are to updating all of them? Where are we at? And are we, are we at a comfortable pace addressing that? Or are we kind of going as fast as the funding will allow us to?
I would say we're going as fast currently as the funding will allow us. So we have roughly, rough numbers, we have about 118 miles, or maybe a little bit less than 108, 100 or so miles of sewer. 2019, we did about 20,000 feet. This year, we're doing about 25,000 feet. So it's a pretty small percentage that we've completed so far. However, what we're, what we're doing is we're being strategic about where we're going. We're finding those areas that have high maintenance effort, or require high maintenance efforts. By doing those areas, we can offset hopefully some of our maintenance costs by not having to go and maintain and jet those areas or clean those areas as often as we do currently. Because our primary concern with this H system is root intrusion. So the more roots there are, the more risk we have of blockages in the system, and then blockages in potentially residents' basements. So by targeting these areas, we can be strategic about it. So again, we're going as fast as we can with the current funding, but we're trying to be as strategic and as, and as thoughtful as we can with that fund.
Okay, thank you.
So again, the comparison here with wastewater, so we're right about in the middle with our neighbors. Again, this, our position really hasn't, actually, we have moved down or up on this a little bit. So we've, we've become a little bit cheaper than some of our neighbors. Again, primarily due to our reduction in the metcouncil charges. Our stormwater fund, so this reflects a 5% increase. We are in the process, or we had just completed our first pond maintenance project, so we completed Christian Pond. And we are just now issuing a work order to start Sheridan Pond as well. So over the next five to seven years, we're going to be approaching all of these ponds for some much, much needed maintenance. So that 5% increase helps finance that and, and helps us to achieve those, that maintenance that's much needed. So again, looking at that outlook, you can see how it dips in the middle. That's again primarily based, or due to those pond maintenance projects, and then the fund will start to recover. And we can back off a little on the, on the increases. However, storm is still one of those big question marks. There's a lot of needs there. And again, And again, when we come back, we'll talk about utility resilience. So, again, the comparison here for stormwater, again, right in the middle, so we're keeping a good pace with our neighbors. Suite light user fees, so this was implemented back in two thousand nine, placed on utility bills, primarily just to fund operation maintenance of our suite light system. I believe there was only one increase from what I was told back in around two thousand twelve or so, and that's what the rate is current at currently. So, no increase in this, it's going to remain as is to help maintain our suite lights. Actually, dip for utilities.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from folks in the council? Councilmember Supple.
I just wanted to say thank you, because I know you guys work really hard to do preventive maintenance, which ends up saving, excuse me, saving us in the long run, so thank you.
Absolutely. Other questions or comments? All right, thank you so much. And then we go to public safety, is that correct? Oh, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. We still have more with Public Works. My bad.
Thank you, Mayor Tom Waters and Joe Powers, City Engineer. So, tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about our five-year street reconstruction and transportation improvements. I think in the past, this presentation has really focused on street reconstruction, but we do have some interesting transportation projects that are coming up, some smaller projects, medium-sized projects that are in street recon that I thought would be, you may be interested in hearing about, so we can talk a little bit about those very briefly. So, just going to run through real quick, an overview and funding outlook of our five-year capital plan for street reconstruction and transportation improvements. And then I want to get into the Fifty-Sixth Street project and the street reconstruction bond process, because we are asking council in the next couple of months to consider a resolution to issue the reconstruction bonds to fund that project. So, I want to go into that in detail. And then at the end of my slides, I do have a number of slides that have some detailed information on all of the different projects in our five-year plan, which I'm, I'm happy to go to, but I do know that we, I don't, City Manager Regis is already running a little bit behind on time.
We're actually pretty good.
Okay. Well, I will, I will-
If you can wrap up by six fifteen, we should be.
Yeah, that should be no problem. So, if council's interested, I'd be happy to go through some of those more detailed projects, just to give you a little bit of an outlook on what we're planning over the next. Very, very quick overview, and as I mentioned, I have more details on each of these projects. So, big projects going on currently are Seventy-Seventh Street Underpass, you're aware, we started, started working on that last week, so that's progressing. Contractors out there getting going now. We anticipate that project to be under construction until October of twenty twenty-three. So, nearly two and a half years to complete that project and have the underpass open for service. A smaller project we have coming up that we're going to be doing some work this fall and through next year is on our traffic signal system. The majority of the signals, we don't own many in Richfield. We only own, I believe, nine traffic signals in the city. The others are owned by either Mid-Not or Mid-Phuket County. But the traffic signals we do own are all approaching around thirty years old, they're getting kind of close to their end of life. And so, we need to make some, a few upgrades to those to both keep them going for a few more years and to accommodate some traffic control coordination that will need to happen as part of the four ninety-four project along Seventy-Sixth Street and Seventy- seventh Street during construction, because the reality is a significant amount of traffic while there's work on the freeway is going to end up getting diverted onto our local roadways. So, we need to be able to manage that in, in real time, which we don't have the capability to currently. So, we are pushing, pushing Mid-Not to, to help fund that as much as possible and not to use as little as possible. Sixty-Fifth Street reconstruction project is scheduled for next year, twenty twenty-two. I'll get into some details here on just the next slide on that project. Another twenty twenty-two project that we're planning is replacement of the traffic signal at Seventy-Seventh Street in Lyndale. End of twenty twenty, beginning of this year, we did a study on all of our signals to assess their conditions, and we learned that the traffic signal at Seventy- seventh in Lyndale is very, very close to end of life. It has some components where, if they were to fail, we would likely be unable to replace those components at this time and keep that signal functional. So, we really do need to replace that signal, and so we're planning to do that next year ahead of the four ninety-four project, so that is done and operational before the four ninety-four project starts. Richfield Parkway, we're going to be installing RFVs, which is the rapid flashing beacons at the roundabout, Richfield Parkway and Sixty-Sixth Street. I know that's a request we've heard from a number of entities, I think from a number of council members over the past couple of years. So, excited to say that we're going to be doing that. And then the last four projects on this list, we didn't, Director Regis mentioned, these are, these are further out in our, in our five-year planning, and we don't have a, a concrete plan to do any, or the Sixty-Ninth, Seventieth, or Seventy-Sixth Street projects at this time. It, it depends partially on roadway conditions, on existing utility conditions, and of course, on funding availability to those projects. And then the last one on this list is a noise wall along Highway sixty-two. Last year, we did get notification from Mid-Not that we've been approved with our noise wall program for construction of a wall on the south side of Highway sixty-two between Xerxes Avenue and Penn Avenue. So, we'll be working through Mid-Not on that process over the coming years. And I believe that, that should actually say twenty twenty-five, I think, but it says twenty-four. This is a, a little bit hard to read, but this is our funding outlook for all of those projects that we just went through on this, on this list. You'll notice a lot of this is being funded by our municipal state aid funding, which is a, it's not a set amount of, that, it's a, sorry, not a set amount of money each year, it does vary, but it's based on the mileage of our municipal state aid designated routes throughout the city. And we have the opportunity to use this, this money for various infrastructure improvements on our city base. And then the big one to draw your attention to is the request for street reconstruction bonds on the Sixty-Fifth project, at just over six million dollars in street reconstruction bonding. And the remainder of that project would be funded through utility bonds, and the debt service on those bonds is paid out of our utility funds. Have a tax levy increase or a general act by issuing utility bonds. So, the most important thing here for our five-year plan and for this year is the street reconstruction bond requests that we're going to bring to council in the coming months for Sixty-Fifth Street. So, I just wanted to do a bit of a quick overview of what the reconstruction bond process entails, what council will be, will be asked to review and approve funds in the process that we have to go through. So, the very, the first part of this is what we're on right now, which is adopt a five-year street reconstruction plan. So, we're not asking council to adopt that plan tonight at the workshop or the meeting, but we will bring this back for your consideration and official adoption for a resolution at an upcoming meeting. But this is your presentation to give you the chance to ask me any questions you have about the five-year plan. At the same time, then, we would typically plan to hold a public hearing for issuance and approval of bonds. After the public hearing, then, there's been a thirty-day reverse referendum period, at which point anybody could bring to the council a opposition to the bond resolution and the issuance of the bond. And I have it here in front of me, I believe it's. If the city clerk receives a petition signed by voters equal to five percent of the votes cast in the last municipal general election within thirty days following the public hearing, then the bonds can only be issued after a successful referendum. So, if we were to get a petition to the council and the city clerk, then we would be required to have a ref, a citywide referendum on issuing the bond. Assuming we don't go through that process and council approves the bond issuance, then we would move forward with our consultant to prepare the final plans on the project. We would advertise and accept bids, we're currently planning at probably January twenty twenty-two. And then we would sell the street reconstruction bonds in the amount of the construction bid. So, it's not based on estimates, it's based on the actual bid cost to construct the project. And just to note, it's important that the city in the past has historically used street reconstruction funds to fund projects as an alternative to special assessments. Past councils have, have given the direction that they feel our street reconstruction projects kind of fit the city as a whole, and so, the burden of those projects should be borne by the city as a whole, and not specifically on residents who live along, along certain streets where there may need to be more work done on a project that would, that would adversely impact those residents in particular. So, just for some context, since, since we're asking the council to approve the bond resolution specifically project, this has been around for a few years. I think you're all probably fairly well aware of the details. But the project will consist of a street reconstruction along Sixty-Fifth Street, which will go from Nicolet Avenue all the way through Lyndale Avenue, around the corner by the post office, Ray Drive down to Sixty-Sixth. It'll be replacing city utilities, placing some water mains, some sewer mains. Some of it has already been lined, and that will be saved. So, we're only replacing it in areas where it actually needs to move, to accommodate other utilities, especially the stormwater. We are proposing to construct a very large box over from approximately Hillberry Avenue to Richfield Lake. This is needed due to some pretty significant historical flooding issues on the hub property and around the hub property along Sixty-Fifth Street. So, this will hopefully accommodate those flooding issues and, and really allow for the hub property to develop more efficiently. And then some transportation connectivity with the hub redevelopment as well. Additionally, we'll be doing some pavement and striping improvements on Lyndale Avenue. This will complete a gap in our bicycle network that's identified in our bicycle master plan, which is really great. And we'll have a roundabout that will be constructing at Sixty-Fifth Street, Dale, and eliminating an existing traffic signal that's also at its end of life. So, as a, as a hope, we're aware the council approved the preliminary design in July of twenty twenty. So, we've since been working with our consultant to move that design forward. We're at about a sixty percent design plan currently with the consultant. The plan is to complete that design over the rest of this year and finish the project in early twenty twenty. Currently have about a nine point eight million dollar estimated cost for the entire project. And we, we are asking to finance that with street reconstruction bonds of six point one million dollars. I believe it's, at this point, it's six million and, six million and seventy thousand is the exact amount that we're estimating at this time. And then the remainder in utility. I just wanted to very briefly cover then the impact that this street reconstruction bond would have on our tax levy. So, this, this table was developed by others just recently. And you can see down at the bottom, probably the best number to look at. For a six point one million dollar tax levy for a three hundred thousand dollar valued home, this would equate to an increase of approximately twenty-nine dollars and seventy-one cents per year increase on their tax levy, and that would be for a twenty-year revenue. So, I believe, um, my next slide moves into some details on the other projects, so I'd be happy to answer questions on Sixty-Fifth Street specifically.
Councilmember Whalen?
Thank you. I just wanted to, I know we can't fully predict this until bids come in, but how, how recent was the estimate done? And given what we saw happen with the underpass, do we have any guess of whether bids might come in high or low? Or is that too volatile to predict right now?
It's really, really hard to predict. Just for context, our, our hope when we bid the underpass was a lot of us actually thought it would come in lower based on bids from other similar projects in the area over the, over the previous month, over the spring. So, it, it really varies project to project. Part of the complication with the underpass was it's been such a hard fight to get that done and get it moving, and we bid it on such a, such a tight timeframe. So, this is, this is a smaller project, it's a one-year project that we'll be bidding in the winter time, so that's, that's in our favor. Bid it well, have it a project. That being said, this, this estimate of nine point eight million dollars currently has a twenty percent. So, ideally, we don't, we use little to no, none of that contingency when we actually build the project.
Thank you.
Other questions from council members? Nope? Okay.
Great. So, I'll just wrap this up by saying, we haven't identified a date, I believe, to come back to council with the bond resolution in the public hearing. So, we'll be sharing that with you, but anticipated would probably be late August or early September, September.
Other, oh, sorry, you know what? I have a question, and I forgot to ask it. So, for the Sixty-Fifth Street reconstruction, given the timeline of the hub, I know, you know, that was part of why we had put it off. There was other reasons as well, but now, I'm assuming it's kind of gone the opposite direction in terms of where they're at and being ready for redevelopment, and so, that would put additional pressure on getting it done sooner? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
We, we put ourselves in a really difficult spot if we were to not do the Sixty-Fifth Street project, particularly in installing the stormwater infrastructure that's development at the hub.
Okay.
Not to say it couldn't, it would just be really hard. There would, there would likely be, need to be a much more significant infrastructure, infrastructure developed on the site as part of the redevelopment.
Got it, thank you. Councilmember Hayford Leary?
Um, just a couple of questions. One, well, first of all, I'm just kind of curious on the hub thing. The whole thing is pavement now, so how does it get worse under redevelopment?
So, the biggest issue is that it currently floods.
Okay.
Yeah, so they, they would need to address those flooding issues as part of their redevelopment. And so, that would require more infrastructure on their site to address that.
Okay.
It's, it's uncontrolled at the moment.
Okay. And then I was also curious, just on the list of projects, are there local costs related to four ninety-four that would be a project? Like, for example, Director Asher mentioned, a local cost to upgrade the sidewalk on the front of his road or something?
Yeah, there are, and that's, that's not reflected in our, our five-year plan at this point. We simply don't know the scope of what Mid-Not is going to ask us to contribute.
Okay.
Our, our goal is to pay as little as, as possible as, as the locals, so there's going to be costs.
And I'm just curious, just because the crosstown sound wall is one of the items now, do we pay anything if there's a four ninety-four sound wall? Or is that covered by the project?
That's a very good question. I'm not sure of the answer to that, to be honest, but I've been looking for it.
Okay. And the, the other thing, I'm just curious about, sort of looking forward, it's not on our CRP, but I assume at some point, local roads need to get reconstructed, whether that's thirty years out or whatever, and our new assessment policy probably won't survive an entire city of new streets.
Yeah.
Right?
It's a question, you're right, it's, it's probably twenty years out for massive reconstruction or milliner overlay again. One thing to note is, Director Regis, to show in the budget, that three point two, approximately a million dollar five-year item for a given, given management program, is around eight hundred thousand dollars a year. So, that covers maintaining all of the roadways that we did milliner overlay over the last seven years. That would be spot concrete replacement, doing, and, 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 sorry, and also doing pavement maintenance on roadways that weren't part of the milliner overlay program. So, we have approximately fifteen percent of our roadways that weren't done with milliner overlay, because they had been reconstructed a little bit more recently, in better, better shape. But will have to be done at some point, but we're budgeting to pay that out of, out of our franchise fee fund, which is what's currently paying the debt service on the milliner overlay bonding. But yes, at some point, we'll probably be, be faced again with the issue that all of our roads are the same age and are nearing their end of life, and so, there has to be an assessment of, do we, do we do the same project that we did here in the two thousand ten and, and do a really significant amount of our roadways in a short time period? Or do we try to get ahead of that and maybe start reconstructing or, or rebuilding things a little bit earlier?
Okay. So I, I just ask about the special assessments in the future, just because it, it's tough now that if we had a standard that when we reconstruct local streets, 20% is paid by the property owners who benefit? Because it would be, if, if we had a precedent, if we had an understanding in our community, it would be helpful to apply that to the major streets too, not that somehow they're paying everything, but property owners do benefit from it, particularly streets like 70th or 76th Street West that are on there. So I guess it just makes me wish I knew what we were doing in 20 years, so we could fairly start applying that policy now.
Yeah, I mean, we could make some estimates of, of roadways 20 years out probably, based on just when they were constructed, when their last major maintenance on them. Um, and then there's other things that impact our street reconstruction too, right? There's, there's utility projects that might drive a street reconstruction project more than the basic
Yeah.
more than the basic, the answer to pavement condition. Um, like, I guess it's, it's a question that council might face in the future too, is just council wants the city to take the direction of, of doing special assessments for roadway projects at some point in the future.
And, and then just again, to, to say this, since, um, I, reflecting on what we did with, uh, franchise fee, it does seem a bit unfair that basically people living in apartments and in smaller lots are subsidizing those who live in larger lots, um, and single-family homes um, by making everybody pay based on the utility thing rather than the amount of street that benefits their property. So I probably will not be on the council at the time that decision has to be made, but I hope that we go a different direction, because in retrospect, it was, it was a good way to make the fee feel less impactful, but it did result in people paying more than their fair share in some cases.
Other comments or questions? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you. I had, um, uh, a couple of comments, and really appreciated Councilmember Hayford O'Leary's question and clarification about what expectation MinDOTs may have or what with 494. Um, and I don't know if we're figuring that, that in, in the, as we're, in our financial plan as we're looking forward long-term, but that, it's something I think about all the time. So any, any clarity on that would be helpful. Um, but two, two question comments. One, it's been a couple of years since we've talked about this, but in addition to the flooding, isn't it also true that part of the reason why we have that awkward, um, parking lot behind the hub is because there's infrastructure under there that also, to the extent we want to build on that, we want it to be redeveloped in a, in a reasonable way, we, we have to take care of that, is that also true?
Yeah, that's 100% correct. Um, the, the quick historical context is that 65th Street used to go straight east to west between Lyndale and Nicolet. The hub had a parking lot on the north side of 65th Street. Sometime, I believe, in the, that's when the street was reconstructed to curve up to the north and the parking lot opened to the south. But there's, um, there's a large dam or I think a, oh, my mic's gone. Maybe it's a 16-inch diameter water main that runs through the hub property. That's a main trump line for a water service to the west side of the city. Um, that will be relocated as part of the 65th Street project. So we get that out of, and out of the easement that it's in, in private property and then go right away.
That's great.
That's a very good point. Thank you, Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you. And my last, my last question, uh, or comment is, um, I lost it. Oh, no, I, I have it. Uh, the question is, Director Regis talked about, um, and Councilmember Hayford O'Leary talked about the, the policy question of whether we want to be the debtor, securing the financing to do, to build the roads or have us, have an assessment, uh, for the citizens that benefit. Um, and then oftentimes in situations like that, I understand we become the creditor and we sometimes finance so we don't, the, 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 the fee doesn't fall so, so heavily on the, on the, on the individual taxpayers. And so I think we, I think we have the right policy there, but I, I appreciate Councilmember, uh, O'Leary's thought that it's, it's a conversation maybe helpful for us to have now, and I would be open to revisiting how we think through that. Um, so I, I don't have a strong opinion on it, but I have a, I wouldn't just assume that we're doing it right if Director Regis or anybody had any, any thoughts on that.
You're asking about the usage of franchise fees or?
Or the, the usage of, of, of special, special assessments particularly, that right now, I mean, I think, I, I liken principle the idea that, that the city just takes it on our shoulders and we, we, we get the debt and we, we bond and we build the roads.
Yeah, I think, I think the thought process with, um, issuing street reconstruction bonds is that everybody uses the roads.
Yeah.
So, and this was the council's thought process, so let's, you, a tax levy, because everybody pays for it. And then the thought was to fund all this kind of stuff, use franchise fees, because then franchise fees go to everybody. If, we levy taxes, um, there's certain nonprofits, churches, things like that, that we don't tax, but franchise fees go to all those, um, certain entities and things like that, so that it spreads it out a little more and things like that, so. Um, and the other thing I thought of too was our neighbor to the west, City of Edina, they, they do special assessments and people get very upset over that, and I think there's been some lawsuits filed and things like that, and it's very prohibitive to those residents and when those streets are reconstructed and those special assessments are levied, we're talking $10,000, $15,000, $20,000 and stuff like that. And we're basically not doing that by issuing debt and paying for it, both tax levies and things. I, I, I think whether it's right or wrong, I guess that's each individual council's decision to make for each individual city and things like that, so I said.
No, that, that does, I just, I, I think that's generally where I, where I fall to. I think it, it's, it's an equitable tool. I just didn't, I, I think it's just worth mentioning that those are, we have, we, we have a, we have a decision to make that just because we've always done it one way, we wouldn't necessarily have to.
You know, and nothing with franchise fees too, is it, nobody can touch that revenue source except the city. Whereas we have like LGA or something, some other, other revenue source from the state or something like that, they can take that away, away from us or reduce it or something like that. Where franchise fees, you know, that's in our control. Um, and I don't think we've raised fees for probably four or five years, I don't know. I mean, I, I think the fees have been pretty flat.
Okay.
Thank you. So I do want to wrap us up. Um, are there any other items on, on this?
I, I may have the other projects on here, but I'm happy to just skip those. If council would like to go through those slides in detail, you can reach out to me individually for any questions. But it's really just a summary of, uh, it's some more detailed information on each of those projects.
On each of the specific projects, okay. Um, City Manager Rodriguez, do you think we should move on to the let, next section? Okay. Versus continuing, okay, great. All right, well, thank you so much for the presentation. And then our last presentation is with public safety, correct?
Yes, and I just wanted to point out that in your, in your packets, you have a list of the proposed fees for the 2022 budget. Most of them are flat or they're being increased by, uh, cost of living, so 3%. Um, if you have any questions on, on these proposed fees, um, just email me and we'll get you some more information, but wanted to give you a preview of what we're proposing before the August 24th work session. And so one of the fees that you had asked about during the year was liquor license fees, and so, um, Support Services Manager Anderson is here to present.
Maybe the speaker, I think using it.
Okay. All right, I just have, um, five brief slides. I know we're, um, we had a lot on the agenda tonight. So I just want to cover, um, a brief history of our liquor, specifically our intoxicating liquor fees, um, the progression of increases that we've seen, kind of where we're at today. Um, current fees, what we did during COVID. Um, you can kind of see where we're at in terms of how many licenses we issue based on, um, different liquor licenses. Um, talk a little bit about the moratorium, um, where our neighbors are at in terms of their intoxicating liquor fees, and then what staff are proposing to the council to consider, um, for 2022. So, over the last almost 20 years, um, fees have been increased 3% annually, from 2002 to 2014 to cover things like our food, pool, and lodging inspection contract with, uh, Bloomington Environmental Health, um, education and training with those establishments, licensing staff time, calls for service by the police department, mandatory alcohol and tobacco compliance checks, uh, within those establishments, any state and local violation enforcement that takes place, and then application background investigations. Where we're at today, um, embedded within the city code, we have restrictions on how many licenses we can, um, give out essentially. So for intoxicating liquor licenses, um, we cannot issue more than 15. Um, pre-COVID, for several, two decades roughly, we've averaged, um, between 10 and 12 establishments in the city that have held an intoxicating liquor license. We're down to seven right now, um, and that's because, um, we've lost the American Legion. Lynn 65 closed, Don Pablo's closed a while back, but they had a, an intoxicating liquor license. We lost Tula Hans during COVID, um, Khan's Mongolian Barbecue downgraded from an intoxicating to, I believe, just a 3.2 malt liquor license. A couple more had downgraded, we're not sure if they're going to jump back up to an intoxicating liquor license. And so, right now, we've got seven intox licenses, one club license, uh, which is the VFW, 10 wine, 11 3.2, and then eight establishments have Sunday sales. Our current fee, um, is $15,036 for an intoxicating liquor license, and then I've listed the other fees as well. Um, these fees have not increased since 2014. From October 2019, right before the pandemic started, to September 2020, um, these establishments brought in $13 million in annual food and liquor sales. We collect that data, um, yearly at renewal, um, to make sure their food-alcohol ratios are where they need to be. Um, in, in a healthy year of 10 to 12 intoxicating licenses being issued, we collect about $180,000 in, um, in revenue, and that revenue, um, keeps our staff here. Um, during COVID, we collected $72,000 in revenue. We provided a 20% discount on that fee and gave an extra, uh, 90 days to pay that fee. Any questions? Yes.
Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you. I have two, uh, quick questions. One, I was just curious, and it's too bad Director Regis left, if the, the loss of fees in this department would be eligible, uh, would be eligible fees that are related to that, uh, those, those, and I don't know if they're CARE dollars or which bucket they, but the federal dollars.
Yeah, American Rescue Plan.
Yes.
Um, CARE is ab, absolutely, you couldn't use it for revenue replacement, but ARPA, you're supposed to be able to, but because they're, the current guidance is entity-wide. That's why I said when I added it up for 2021, we're running about $915,000 short, which is huge for us. But because we've got some other revenues that are, are up, you don't, entity-wide, it gets buried. So it's, um, something, League of Minnesota City has just sent, I think it was like a seven-page letter to try and get clarification on this and even change some of the guidance. So we're still hopeful that it'll change, but yes, in theory it is.
And then the, not that I would expect it now, but in, with other departments, like with, with water and with property taxes, there's often a graph to where, where our fees rank relative to, you know, the surrounding metro, uh, suburbs and cities in Minneapolis. And I was wondering if, if there's something like that that was, that, that was available, or if we could have.
It's coming.
Oh, it's coming. Oh, great.
So just to, to, um, wrap up this slide, essentially over the past 19 years, this fee has increased about $3,800 in 19 years, which averages out to be a couple hundred dollars a year.
Go ahead. Councilmember Whalen?
Um, I was just curious, if you don't know this, that's totally fine, is, um, I don't know that I had seen before just how drastic of a difference it is between the 3.2% license and the, um, intoxicating liquor license, excuse me. Um, is, I appreciate seeing, and it, it's good to put in context, um, the, the rough estimate of revenue that someone can make when they have a, a certain type of liquor license. Is the, um, revenue difference roughly equal to the, the cost difference? I guess if, if part of what we're trying to solve for is, um, addressing the revenue costs of administering this, um, I'm wondering if the increasing the 3.2% license would be a consideration? Or if that, I know in the report it talks about that that is significantly less staff work, um, for that kind of license. Um, but was curious if you have any sense of revenue-wise, how much of a difference that might be?
Well, it, per state statute, a city cannot raise these license fees, the club, wine, 3.2, Sunday, and intox without, um, holding a public hearing and going through that whole process. And so I think fees haven't been raised since 2014. And I don't know that there's, um, I don't know how much interest there is in, in looking at raising those.
Other questions? No? Okay.
So where we are compared to our neighbors, um, we've, we've looked at several cities, um, around the metro, some bigger than us, some smaller than us, but, um, these are the intox fees, uh, for 2021 and within these cities. We are just one of like four cities that license on the calendar year. So we're always ahead of the game when it comes to fees and what we're going to do with them. Most cities license from, um, starting in April or May, June. Um, so a lot of cities are just starting to have this conversation, uh, for their next, uh, renewal period. Um, so when you look at fees, when you average it out, we're about $5,000 more than, than everybody around us averaged out. We've not had, we've not had, um, establishments, I haven't had any establishments call, um, and, and come, make an argument, um, about their fee. During COVID, the majority of our seven establishments that have this license, uh, paid in full, they paid on time, um, they were given refunds of the 20%. And so I know that we've had, um, establishment owners attend councils, council, um, meetings in the past and have, um, appreciated that, um, the response that they get from the police department when necessary, the support that they get from the city is, is worth the fee, so. Um, we continue to check these annually, uh, when Appendix D is, is up for review, um, and we'll continue to do that, uh, going forward.
I have a question. So could you speak to why there is the $5,000 difference for, um, against the next closest city?
I'll, I'll speak to that, Mayor. They had the same ones last night. So as, thank you, Mayor, for the question. Um, as Support Services Manager Anderson talked about, um, we were given the his, history back, um, as far as I can remember, when Betsy Osborne was here, when Betsy was in Jennifer's position, we were told by the council, we want these licenses to increase each year by 3%. Um, the problems that we were having is we had several establishments, um, uh, to name like Chi Chi's, Jung Bo, a couple other ones that were increasing the costs of public safety, uh, to the point that, um, you know, uh, the fees and, and the time spent with these establishments and mitigation and things like that, um, were increasing our, our overall budget, our overall expenditures. So we were told, year after year by councils, um, previous to, to you, to raise these fees. So from a historical perspective, that's why we are where we are. So from a historical perspective, that's why we are where we are right now. Along with that, obviously, we've increased staff to handle the number of licenses that we've had. Their salaries have increased. The state has changed the processes on how to apply for liquor licenses, what we're expected to do, compliance checks, things like that. All that gets totaled into that cost of that intoxicating liquor license. So that's why we're five thousand over where we're at, is because previous councils gave us the direction to increase at three percent per year. When I was appointed in two thousand fourteen, I put a moratorium on that intoxicating liquor license because of what I saw and the fact that we no longer had some of those problem establishments. And so we haven't raised that fee in over seven years, but the fee is what it is is because of the direction of previous councils.
Thank you. Councilmember Troutman.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thanks for, for preemptively anticipating the, the slide that I, that I would wanna see. And, and I, I feel like you, you, you didn't do yourself a favor by including Minneapolis, and there are licensing fees on there. They would've helped our average a little bit, because I know, I know they're significantly more. But I, I just wanna, wanna point out what I certainly have heard directly from a lot of restaurants about how prohibitive, and, and sometimes the fee, the, the word is prohibitive. And, and with current restaurants, and I could give, give you names, and, and particularly with restaurants that are looking to relocate to, to Richfield, and that's another consideration, where five thousand dollars doesn't seem like a lot in the grand scheme of things, and fifteen thousand dollars maybe, but when you're a small business, and really who this falls heaviest on are small independent shops, because if you're a TGI Fridays or something like that, this is, this is not the same consideration that it is if you're, if you're like a Lynn sixty-five, or you're, you're like, you know, one of the other, or a Fireside Pizza, or you'd, one of the independent shops. And so, full disclosure, I work with a lot of independent restaurants, and so I, I, I hear directly from restaurant owners, but when you, when you see, when you look at all our neighbors, and these are our direct neighbors, I think you, you go out to other cities and you'll find fees that are actually significantly lower than that. So that's a good average. I think it's pretty representative from where we are, but I think in other parts of the Twin Cities, you'll see even significantly lower licensing fees. And so we would be even further out, out of line with kind of a broader region. Again, with the big caveat of Minneapolis, Minneapolis is probably half of what Minneapolis is. But as we consider who we want to be here and how we wanna be here, and what kind of restaurants, if we just want large national chains to be here, or if we want small independent restaurants, this is, if, and, and if we just went from, from, you know, ten to twelve to seven restaurants, and depending on which way that, that goes, we're trying to make up maybe a thirty-five-thousand-dollar gap. And I don't know, having a half a dozen independent, not all independent, but largely independent restaurants is the best way to raise that, that revenue. So I'll just put that, I'll put that out there. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
I agree with Councilmember Troutman's comments. I, it's tough, having just heard about our budget issues, to wanna put another cost in there, but just, just looking at this slide, this is unacceptable. And I appreciate that we've frozen it for a while, but it's clear that other communities aren't anywhere close to keeping up or picking up with us. And although people may not be calling in to complain to staff about their fees, I think they're kind of voting with their business decisions to drop those licenses. If we have business, places like Conn's that are open, serving liquor, but have dropped to a license, that's one-tenth of the cost. I think that says a lot. And Councilmember Troutman is also right, there are even lower ones than this. Minneapolis's is also much less than Richfield. I just looked it up out of curiosity, ten thousand eight hundred.
Really?
Yeah. There may be plenty of other expensive permits in Minneapolis, but to me, my goal would be to at least match what we did during COVID, which is minus twenty percent, to get somewhere, to get it in line with the rest. But I think we're, we hear all the time from business owners, but we hear from people in the community that they want sit-down restaurants, they want a nice thing, and we're providing a financial disincentive to build that, to open that in Richfield. And I, I think we should reduce that.
Councilmember Supple.
Just out of curiosity, are the wine licenses and the three-point-two percent licenses similar to other communities? Because that seems to be a huge disparity between the two.
They are. Yeah. We're, we're very much in line with, with the list, with these cities, with our club, wine, three-two, and Sunday sales is actually a, a state-mandated fee, so we can't do anything about that.
Other comments or questions? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Just quickly, I am, I am curious in terms of the, I mean, the staff report talked a little bit about the additional background check and work with the intoxicated liquor license. I am curious in terms of police response, do places that have wine licenses have like ten percent of the calls or anywhere proportionate to this amount of police resources that go into the, the places that serve alcoholic beverages but aren't intoxicating liquor?
Councilmember Hayford O'Leary, most of our calls are to those that hold the intoxicating liquor license. On average, when we used to have seven, or actually ten to twelve, our calls for service were six to seven hundred. I just ran the calls for service, and we're roughly around three to four hundred. If you look at our performance objectives, if you, you know, those calls are usually mandated by two officers, two squad cars, anywhere between a half an hour to an hour. Our performance measure roughly is around two to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Times three to four hundred calls, that's roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year, responding to those three to four hundred calls for liquor issues.
Okay, and they, they are liquor-related generally, drunk patrons or...
Yep, or other disturbances, disorderly conduct or things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments or questions from folks? Okay. Councilmember Wayland.
I just wanna, I don't, I don't know if we're going here next, but just to anticipate the, then the question, I do want to, I want to acknowledge that I really appreciate the, the staff report, kind of the impact that it would have to, to lose that revenue, and that, from a staff perspective, if, if you were told, like, this is what you have, work with it, that that, the only solution you see to resolve that is to reduce positions, which I guess my, what I would like to point out, that I, I felt would have been appropriate to include in the staff report, it would be the other option, that I, at least from our stance, if this is a priority, that we have the ability to raise revenue in other ways, that this could be a choice we make to reduce this fee and maintain staff, if that is what is needed to provide the services, that, that, that is what we as a council decide is to how to, how to have a budget that supports the services we want to provide. And so I, I hear both the, what it costs staff and what staff, like the amount of work that goes into this, both from a, the administrative side and from the responding to calls side, but also, to other council members' points, our, our hands are somewhat tied of, like, yes, restaurants require service from us, but also they are a community amenity, and we spend, we lose money on amenities all the time, that if we are choosing to, by choosing to keep it this high, I think absolutely we are going to provide a financial disincentive for, for restaurants, which are community amenities, calling Richfield home. And so I, all that to say, I guess I, I would love to, whether we know this now or whether this is something we'd have to circle back to, what, what would the option look like to main, to not terminate positions, to continue offering the service, but also reduce this fee and make up that revenue elsewhere? Because I, in the, the grand scheme of our total budget, this is not a high amount of money, especially if we, like, the difference in reducing it is far different than the fluctuation we've seen because of COVID. And so I, I guess I would entertain the idea, if we had a four-point-nine-one percent levy increase, if that's what it took, I, I guess I don't know what the numbers would be. So I'm wondering if we have a, a sense of that, is that an option? Is there a, a route to reduce this fee to hopefully further encourage restaurants to consider Richfield without requiring terminating people?
Well, that's, Councilmember Wayland, that's a good question. That's something we would have to look at. I mean, we're in a unique position because of, our public safety budgets are combined, so we would have to take a look at that. I mean, what we preliminarily looked at is, any loss of revenue, we would be in a position as an alternative to possibly have to lay people off. Now, that's just one alternative. The other issue is to look at that dollar amount, make that cut, and then increase our expenditures. And if that's okay with the council, then we would increase our expenditure, and whether or not that, that affects the tax levy. We could also look at other fees that we looked in here that we did increase roughly three percent. We've just have never touched that intoxicating fee because it is a number that is quite large, and, and I understand it, and that's why we put the moratorium in place. But those are some of the things that we can look at, and those are some of the options that are on the table. You know, normally, what happens between Support Services Anderson's budget and my budget, when they're combined, she may be high, I may be low, or vice versa, we're able to absorb some of that. But in some situations, you know, we're not, and then it will increase the expenditures in our budget. So, I mean, that's something we can definitely look at. I think the rest of, as she mentioned, the rest of our licenses are in line with everybody else. It's just the history of that intoxicating fee license, what was, and what we were asked to do back ten, fifteen years ago, has just ballooned. So as a council, yes, you can make that decision to lower it, and then we'll figure out what alternatives that we can make, and that was just one of the many alternatives that are on the table.
I wanted to ask, not to put you on the spot, but Councilmember Supple, do you have any opinions on kind of looking more into that we've heard from the other council members?
I don't think we should make a drastic cut, but I would say we could cut it some, but I also think we should look at, should we be increasing the club or the wine? And kind of meet more in the middle? Because that seems like that's a big difference unless you like actually have to do nothing for the, the club, for the wine and the three-point-two. It just seems like it's such a big drastic difference.
And I would just say, I would be in support of kind of looking at what the options would look like to reduce the intoxicating liquor sales, maybe, you know, as low as the ten thousand range where the other cities are, and then maybe there's an option in between this fifteen and that, and look at what the different options would be, kind of like Councilmember said. What are the different things you, Supple said, the different areas you have to play with to kind of bring it a little more in line? And it makes sense that that's what they asked and why, but then I'm almost thinking like, maybe it's time to right-size that now, where we are today, and bring a little more balance. So I'd be open, I don't have an opinion without looking at the cost-benefit analysis of doing that and what the options are, but I would definitely be in support of and interested in doing an assessment deeper in that intoxicating liquor fee.
Councilmember Wayland.
Just wanna add on, I would echo, I, I realize I didn't actually state my opinion on this. I think I'm more in that place of not certain what needs to happen, but would appreciate seeing more of the options. I also realize this is clearly not in a vacuum from the rest of the budget, and in order to get to four-point-nine, I realize we've already said no to many things. And so as, as we explore those options, I think it would be worth also having the context of what else we've already said no to, and if, I recognize there's a whole lot of things that we could do if we went from four-point-nine to four-point-nine-one, so that example was, yeah, I guess I'd, I'd appreciate more options and more context on how this fits into the larger budget.
Councilmember Troutman.
Just really briefly, it's probably not a surprise to anybody, I would really love to see this, and, and when we think, if, if Minneapolis is also at ten thousand dollars, if we evaluate the value that Richfield has relative to Edina or Minneapolis or Bloomington, for, for us to, to say we should be above Minneapolis or above Bloomington, or that would be the goal. Understanding our budget is what it is, even if we had to stagger that, and we say we're gonna get there in two years or three years, that might be a consideration. And it's maybe another thought, and I just had a quick question for, for Chief Henthorn about the calls for service, which just, those are, those are significant and probably the biggest cost that we, that we have, and maybe you wouldn't know this off the top of your head, but how, how do, how do those establishments compare to say like other, I'm just thinking of like gas stations, where they're all, you draw a circle around gas stations, and well, there are a lot of calls for service, I imagine, or maybe there are not a lot of calls to service for, for gas stations, but do they, it's not from like zero calls to service to we, we serve, service four hundred, but does, does that make, that maybe, kind of understand my question, is there, how much more do we get for those compared to say other restaurants or other gas station, or other public places?
Councilmember Troutman, I think when you look at gas stations, I mean, obviously, you, you have a different amount of criminal activity that could occur there. When we do relicensing, renewal licensing, we look at the calls for service, so we focus strictly on alcohol-related calls. So that's where it differentiates between, say, a gas station that may have, you know, sixty a year. I mean, when you break it down to the seven intoxicating liquor establishments that we have, and you look at three to four hundred calls, you know, you're roughly in that, you know, fifty to sixty, maybe, per venue. Now, if you look at some of the bigger restaurants that hold the licenses, maybe they have seventy-five or a hundred. So to look at the gas station versus those that hold the liquor license, it's pretty comparable. But, you know, it's still, you know, you're there on usually a liquor violation or disorderly conduct or some other more serious crime than, than probably at a gas station.
Councilmember Supple, and then after this, I'd like to continue moving on, because we're running short on time.
Just, if we're gonna come back with more information, it would be helpful to know exactly how much you're spending for those establishments. Are we covering our expenses, or are we making money off of this? And what's going on?
Councilmember Supple, right now, we're just, we're breaking even. I mean, with the performance objectives I talked about and the number of calls for service that we respond, right now, we're just breaking even. We're not making any money, I know, and we're not in the business to make money. So, you know, if we're gonna look at these fees and, and whether we raise some of these fees, I know the club one, I don't think by state law we can touch. I know that one we can't at all, because I've talked to alcohol gambling and tobacco enforcement on that. That I don't think we can touch, but we can take a look at these other ones. But, yeah, when you look at the intoxicating liquor, we're just basically breaking even. So, and that, again, you know, not to backtrack, but that was in response to the problem properties that we had and the amount of time that we spent, and so with the increased staff that we now have, which we didn't have before, that's why we are where we're at now.
Chi-Chi's.
Thank you. If we can move on.
So I just, this is the last slide, and it sounds like there's a plan in place to kind of get you some more information on what some other options could look like. And we can do that.
Okay. Councilmember Wayland.
I have a question about the other fees. I don't know if more people wanted to comment on this piece.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, there were, in the, the long list of other licensing fees, there were two that actually went down, and I just wanted to see if that was intentional. And one, I think, is a typo, because it's fairly significant, it's copied from the other one. On page fifteen, at the very bottom, relating to a tattoo initial investigation fee, I think it just got copied from the line above. I'm guessing we're not cutting that by, okay. I'm seeing some nods. And then, the, page twenty-two, a nuisance conduct fee, which I guess I may even need a definition of what that is, but that, that went down fifty dollars, is that because those, recognizing that those cost less than that, or?
So both fees are, both fees are going to be reduced. The, the tattoo fee, completely out of proportion. And so we brought that in line with the massage. And so we brought that in line with the massage, to match the massage fees. The nuisance, that was a typo from last year. It should have been, it should have been 300 last year. We did not charge people 350 this past year. So that was just a typo, and, and I felt badly about that.
Any other questions? Councilmember Supple.
I did have one question. I noticed there was the fee for taxis. How does Uber and Lyft fit into that? Do they need to do some kind of licensing or?
We don't license Uber and Lyft, those kinds of companies, strictly taxis. We have one taxi provider in the city that's licensed. And then they, they pay for the vehicles that operate within the city, so.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Troutman.
One, one, one question on, on fees. I, I know a couple of years back, we had talked about collecting fees from Airbnb. And, and I think they have a process internally in their organization to collect those fees, but we hadn't, we hadn't pursued that. I think it would be equitable to our, our hotels if we did do that, and potentially a source of revenue. So I just would, if we have not yet, in the interim, since it came up a couple of years ago, looked into that, I'd love to see that happen.
Yeah. Right now, Councilmember, that, the, the holdup to that is just staff availability. We just don't have the time to do it, but it is on, it is on my to-do list. I am going to get in trouble, speaking of staff, with my staff if I don't get you over to council chambers. So what I'm hearing, just to summarize, for this issue in particular, is to bring back options and more context. And also, we'll talk about it as part of the bigger budget picture and give you more stories behind all those numbers, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will adjourn our meeting.